Item 13 is a motion to authorize the staff to issue requests for proposals for architectural engineering services related to the renovation of the Moore Illusions Memorial Library.
So.
Discussion, so I put this item on in light of the discussions that we've had on these issues in terms of the library. I think that there's been a lot of obviously different points of view about this, but when we look at what we need to do for the library and.
Come on, one forty-four years is not bad.
When we look at what we need to do for the library, I think it's important for us to have a more modest approach. I think the concern that many taxpayers have expressed is the full $5.8 million borrowing and then above and beyond from that, if we were to go forward with the Belmont building and the work at that building. We know that budgeted right now, the budget for that is $7 million over a 19-year to 20-year period. So this was discussed, we had discussed in executive session over the last two years, the alternative of this, but it really hadn't gone anywhere. So in light of where we are now, I think it's important for us to have a more modest approach, a more conservative approach. Fix our library to make it ADA accessible, to fix our parking problem, and to make it focus on the things that we need to fix in terms of what we've heard from what's deficient with it. So with that said, if there's any conversation from the council.
No more comment.
All right, is there anyone from the, um, yes.
Excuse me, can I, um, I don't get a chance to speak. Do you want to go into the public or?
Sure, you can go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry about that. A few questions were Mr. Mannix. How many members of the board trustees did you work with on this RFP?
This RFP was, was an old, is an RFP that had been put forward in the last couple of years that Jeff sent to me, the former engineer, together. So he may have worked with some of them, but I don't know.
And, okay, so no members of the library staff you're aware of?
Well, I think that they probably talked with him about it, but I don't know.
All right. 5,109 people voted for the library bond in 2016 to purchase real estate and build a new town library. So right in the text of the ballot says purchase real estate, build a new library. How many people voted to upgrade or renovate the existing library? I think that would be zero. What would the cost of these renovations be and would they be reimbursed by OLS? The answer is no. Would the library have to close for a period of time during these renovations? Most likely yes. So this RFP is being presented by and headed up by Matt Mannix. So that's someone with no background in library science, no background in education administration, no background in civic planning. Truly, it was done in the name of pure politics. Instead of having a council of five members working in collaboration with our constituents, we see this consolidation of power. What we're seeing is three people actively working against the very people that they were elected to serve. And at times, you refer to these people as the angry mob. They are not a mob. These are people participating in democracy, exercising their right to do so. They're residents and neighbors, but they are angry. So let's look at some of the wording from the RFP. In the introduction, the last sentence, it says, "This work will be a precursor to and integral part of a comprehensive building renovation project." So is this about fixing the ADA compliance and some of the things that need to be fixed right now, or is it precursor to a comprehensive building project? Remember, a comprehensive building project would be a multimillion dollar project, and it's still no OLS reimbursement for that. And again, something that has received no votes to do as a concept. It's also interesting when you think of it that way. As I mentioned at the last meeting, in section 42 of the town charter, where we talk about, where it talks about the library, it speaks of the powers and duties of the library. "The Board of Trustees shall take sole, shall take possession of the library and shall thereafter be the legal guardians and custodians of the library. They shall provide suitable rooms for the library and arrange for proper care of those rooms." So a comprehensive renovation seems like that would fly in the face of the charter. And when you look a little further and you look into what exactly the town council can do, what's within their powers, section 2.1.7, powers of the town council. "All legislative powers of the town council shall be vested in this council, except such powers as are or may be vested otherwise by the state constitution by this charter and by laws enacted by the General Assembly." So we are bound to this charter. This is a binding document, not a guideline for the town council to work on, work from. And I did speak to the town solicitor, Mark Davis, this week just to get some clarity on exactly what the town council can do and can't do with the library. So when it comes to things like renovating interior space, adding new rooms, that's something that the town council cannot do without permission of the library board. And just, you know, so we can verify that, Mark, you mind commenting on that?
The, the section of the charter you, you refer to, Jesse, mirrors that of Title 29, the original general laws. And it reads verbatim as to the language you just cited. And it bestows on the trustees, the library trustees, the responsibility to maintain suitable rooms and arrange for proper care of the library. And as we discussed, the town owns the library building, so I believe the town would be acting accordingly and proper to bring the building into compliance with, with general laws ordinances. So if anything on the exterior, I think, is well within, is well within the powers of the town. On the interior, as the language suggests, it's a, it's a, it's a little, it's a little murkier. And this language is vague as it is, seems to convey to the trustees, the broad powers to basically maintain and the obligation to maintain the interior room of that building. So the layout, you know, we can get into a discussion about carpeting and paint, but they, it does appear that the trustees have the, the obligation, responsibilities, and the discretion to manage the interior building.
Thank you. So when we look at the bigger picture here, are we going to spend hundreds of thousands, thousands of dollars to get this building up to code and then stop short of what's laid out in this RFP, which is a bigger plan to renovate the interior? Why spend the money on this building when we already have a plan at the Belmont building? At some point, we have to ask, who is the town council accountable to? Because right now, it seems like it's the Matt Mannix show. This town council used to be accountable to the public. It doesn't seem like that's the case right now. So at some point, the three people that vote for this are going to have to answer the question of why they willingly and knowingly broke the town charter if it gets to that point. And that's something that doesn't seem like anyone here is going to hold you accountable to, but Superior Court would do that. And that's going to cost people more money, just like everyone that we sit here costs more money because we're delaying construction. The weekend before the January 22 meeting, that was the meeting where three people in the council voted to sell, put the Belmont building up for sale. I talked to Ricky Lima on the phone. He told me that he goes to ruin and he loved the building and he could see that as an option in Narragansett. He spoke about that at the town council meeting on the 22nd. I, I told him I was for the Belmont building. I wasn't going to agree to a building somewhere else in town at this point, especially when we own the Belmont building. What we did agree on in that call was that we would not, neither of us wanted to put any money into the existing building, no money. We both agreed that was a complete waste of money. After I got the call, I mentioned that to a few people that I speak to, I told my wife, I told Patrick, a few other people. Ricky does not want to put money into the current building. That's something that we are on the same page, but we agree on. So I expected him to keep his word on that. January 22nd at the meeting, when he spoke of building Clark Road, he said that was his plan B. That specifically was his plan B, not renovating the current building. So if that's your plan B, why would he vote for this? He also said you were very willing to work on the RFP and come back with that in two weeks. So I assume you're working on that. I know it probably takes longer than two weeks. You know, we'll see, happy to see that next meeting. But again, if you're working on that, it doesn't make sense to vote on this. Yeah, I guess that's it, that's all I have to say on this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we got a few minutes. There is no violation of the charter, I just want to clarify that in terms of, and we're going to see the RFP things come back, the, the answer to the request for proposals. So it would obviously be, we would be looking at those and vetting those. I think we're going to wait and we're going to have to, why don't we have the stenographer come up? If you want to come up, we'll have you be the only speaker before eight o'clock.
Can you hear, can you hear me? Okay. Those of you who were here at the last meeting or watched it live or on tape. Is the red light on? Oh, now it is. Okay, thank you. Those of you who were here at the last meeting or watched it live or on tape, saw Mr. Mannix's rant. Let me turn the table and mimic Mr. Mannix now. People at home, I want you to see this. Look at the three candidates on the right side of the stage. These three are your one-issue candidates. And what is their issue? It is to kill the library project with their motions to sell the Belmont building, to move the open forum to the end of the meeting, to put forth ridiculous motions to move library functions to the senior center, to propose an RFP for an existing building, and to do anything else to stall the project until the time for spending the bond money runs out. These three are your one-issue candidates. And unlike Mr. Pugh and Mr. Murray, they have no facts to substantiate their candidacies platform. They cannot defend their actions in regards to the library. We don't need an RFP for the present building. What we need is an RFP for the Belmont building. Ten-plus years of work, wanting to determine that the existing building and parking were inadequate. I used to tell my friends that the best way, that the best thing that could have happened would have been for the state to close us down because of all the inadequacies at the present site that have led us to be open only because of waivers from the state. Then you would see what Mr. Mannix calls the angry mob come out in even greater force. We are not an angry mob. We are the vocal majority. Maybe some of your silent minority would speak up if your, if our library had been closed because of this council's inability to follow the wishes of the people. What are you trying to accomplish with this RFP to renovate the existing building? And how are you planning on paying for it when bond monies can't be used? No bond money, no reimbursement from OLS, no private donations, possibly no grants from organizations like the Champlin Foundation. I think this attempt to put a Band-Aid on the current site will probably cost us more than the $33 worst-case scenario Mr. Murray has presented. Are you planning on closing the library while these renovations are taking place? We can't stay open with jackhammers pounding away at walls and floors. And why not an RFP for renovations of the Belmont building? Ms. Lawler, you continually state of a Belmont purchase that now that I have the facts, I think it is even a worse deal. You say you've come to that conclusion after meeting with OLS and the bond council, but you have never once stated what those so-called, so-called facts are. On the other hand, we have heard the library board present the actual facts of the library project many times.
Thank you.
They are well documented.
Could you state your name?
Carley Towne, Woodhill Grove.
Thank you. The OLS reimbursement money is available for renovation of this library, we would apply for the same that we would otherwise, and in terms of the bonded, in terms of.
That's not true.
That's not true.
That's not true.
It is true.
No, it's not.
We heard it at the work session. And, and in terms of the borrowing, we, if we want to talk about the charter, section 6.2 slash 8 of the charter says, "No bond and indebtedness may be incurred pledging the credit of the town in excess of 1.15% of the current adopted budget in any one fiscal year unless submitted to a vote of qualified voters." So we have discretionary borrowing of up to 1.5% each and every year if we wanted to borrow. So we're going to move to our public hearing, which is scheduled for eight o'clock, and we'll come back to this item after the public hearing. Thank you. All right, so now we return to item number 13, which was the motion authorizing the staff to issue requests for proposals for architecture engineering services related to renovation of which is a board library. Yes, Ms. Jeff Shallowitz.
I've been on the Board of Trustees for four years, and I also taught at a competitive four-year college in Pennsylvania. And I must say, Mr. Mannix, Ms. Lawler, and Mr. Lima, if I had students that came to class and weren't prepared and hadn't done their homework, they would get a failure, failing grade. I would expect my students, I was teaching nursing, to be thoroughly researched and prepared for what the assignment was. And I feel unacceptable, and I'm sorry, Mr. Town Solicitor, but I've heard you say several times that you weren't prepared to discuss this when things were on the agenda. And I also feel that Mr. Mannix acts like the jury, the judge and the jury, and this is supposed to be a democratic town where you're supposed to be the moderator. And I've heard you numerous times argue with people that came up to the mic. I don't think that's your role, and you might be a lawyer, but I'm also pretty well-versed in Robert's Rules of Law, and I've been attending town council meetings for close to 50 years, and I've never seen anything like this. It's like you make the motion, Ms. Lawler seconds it, and Mr. Lima goes along. So that to me is, there's something wrong here, because you call the board one-brained. I would say look in the mirror and do your own inventory about your own actions. And nothing family members write letters, that's their option. But Mr. Mannix, one of your brothers approached me in the hallway one day before the election and told me not to trust my best friend. She wasn't who I thought she was. What business does he have telling me that?
That seems to criticize.
To me, to me, ma'am, you, that looks like you're trying to intimidate, coerce, and retaliate against us. And people are afraid of retaliation. And you get very dicey when it comes to people disagreeing with you. Yes, you do, and that's if you go and look at any of the U2s, there you are. And I don't believe you do your research on the things. And I asked Mr. Lima before he ran, what he thought about the library. And he said he has everything he needs at work. And he also raised his finger to me one day in the back of the room and told me, "Don't you dare try to get me off the building, come in." That to me looks like intimidation. And are you going to accept this kind of a culture in our town? It's despicable. And it's despicable the way you treat the library supporters. I venture to say that many, many times at Rock Club and the Vineyard Shores Beach Club, and Royal Social Club, where a lot of people do enjoy the library.
Thank you.
No, sorry.
Thank you. Yes, Laurie.
Laurie Kelly, 25, Wildwood Farm Road. I have a statement to read, but first I do want to correct you, Matt. At the January 14 workshop, Karen Miller was here, and for those of you who may not remember, she is the head of the OLS for the state of Rhode Island. And at minute 43, hopefully this will play, she explains why a 9,000-square-foot library will not get OLS money.
With a building that's perhaps not thousands of feet, would we not sign on to a person project like that? The needs, as you guys know, are significantly different in every town in the state. So we need some local, more trustees and local libraries to determine how large a library needs, everything, the evidence and supports there for us and their application to safety.
So, so that's, that's one important clarification right there. It's disheartening that we go to the same workshops, we speak to the same people, and we come away with different information, and thank God it's on audiotape. Tonight, we once again see a clear violation of the will of the people. In November of 2016, 67.9% of the people voted for $5.8 billion on to purchase and renovate the Belmont building to make a new state-of-the-art facility for the people of Narragansett. We, the taxpayers of this town, selected this project as a worthy cause to spend our money on, to improve the town of Narragansett and provide free services to all who enter here. We do not need yet another study of our structurally deficient current building because we, the voters of Narragansett, reviewed the previous studies done by the library and agreed we needed a place where 13,853 people a month could comfortably access a building. We found the plan to move across the parking lot as the most fiscally responsible. These facts are known by the council. In January 10th, 2019, everyone up there received a letter explaining the seven waivers, that is failures of the town of Narragansett's library, and the explanation as to why there are waivers with the state of Rhode Island. Everyone read it, but for some reason, Matt, you think that it's just an ADA violation. It is a physical space. Number 20, the standard is physical space. If you repair the building with no physical space, we are still in violation of the state mandate for operating a sufficient library for the town. Also, the bond cannot be used to pay for the renovations. As I just proved, OLS will not give us grant and aid on a 9,000-square-foot building when we have a mandate for 24,000 square feet. The town council does not select the size or design of the library. And why that, while it may be difficult for you, the state also pays 25% of the library operating budget and up to 50% of reimbursement for renovation. I don't think they do that for parks and rent or any other department.
Thank you.
You are very welcome.
Thank you.
Rosemary Smith, 24, Castor Road. So today I read over a request proposal for the architectural engineering services for the renovation of the existing library, and it did not give me the sense of the complete cost of the project. I hope that before the town council considers comparing the renovation of the current library with the cost of refurbishing the marketplace in Narragansett, that other factors would be considered for the year it would take or the time that it would take to complete the project. And so some of the factors that I was considering today, that should be thought about before this is voted on. The cost of labor for packing, packing up and unpacking the building's materials for storage, which would be two times under the renovation. Renting storage units to put the materials into, or tractor trailers to store the materials in. The issue of whether to rent space for a temporary library for the time that the library does not open. Consideration of the employment or unemployment of the current library staff while these renovations are taking place. And then the concern with dealing with consequences of displacing the 10,000 or more monthly patrons of the library to the surrounding libraries. So I was reflecting on the fact that the town beach has the most patrons for three months of the year. The second most visited municipal venue is the Narragansett-type town library at $10,000 to $15,000 per month, depending on the season. The closing of the beach venue during the summer would not be considered by the town council as it would disrupt the flow of business for the town. My question is, what would be the economic impact of closing or displacing the library for the time of refurbishment? So I hope you'll take those into consideration before you do your voting tonight. This is very important, I know you know that. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Dr. Alba, 24, Eagles Ness Terrace, Narragansett, Rhode Island. I'm trying to understand the rationale of the three town council members who voted to sell the library, and now there's a motion to retrofit the old library. I am assuming the three town council members felt by putting the building up for sale, it will save taxpayer dollars. In reflection of the facts, it appears to me putting the building up for sale was a result of the three town council members acting overzealously. Ironically, if the new library is not built at the Belmont location we now own, it may impact Narragansett residents adversely. Let's review the math. We will lose the approved bond money and OLS Amon money, and the town of Narragansett cannot find a buyout for the Belmont location in the immediate future. As a cost the town paid for it, the taxpayers would lose significantly more money. We all know the former Belmont building was unrentable for many years based on its designated dues. In addition, money obtained by donors may also be lost. In addition, the three town council members who voted to sell the Belmont building did so without a viable alternative and without consultation with the library board. I know there had been many suggestions by the three town council members who voted to sell the recently acquired building with respect to alternative suggestions instead of constructing a new state-of-the-art library. President Mannix suggests we retrofit the old building. Mr. Lima proposed building a new facility at Clark Road and have a park-like setting near the library. Ms. Lawler suggested moving some of the library services to the community center, which is not allowed under our charter. It is apparent the three town council members who did not like the Belmont location do not have a clear vision for an alternative plan as to what is best for the town of Narragansett's new library. However, the library board, who has been working on the new library project for 10 years, under support of the prior town councils, and are all in agreement to the best location for the new library, as are Mr. Pugh and Mr. Murray. The projected tax burden on the homeowner would be a nominal amount, while the return on the investment would be significant. The ability to retrofit the old library into a state-of-the-art library was previously reviewed by the library board, and it was determined not feasible. So I am truly perplexed why this is even being brought up for a request for proposal. I therefore strongly urge the council not to approve the RFP to retrofit the, the old. I therefore strongly urge the council not to approve the RFP to retrofit the old library, as this option is not supported by the library board or past town councils. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to commend, I want to commend everyone here to, that would want to, let's find out the data. Let's do our homework. And the homework is, by the way, homework is getting the RFP, getting the real number. And the gal that said, you got to have one for Belmont, I kind of like that idea too. I'd like to see the difference in the cost of one versus the other. And while you're getting the RFP, you're probably going to stumble on design problems or stuff that can't be done, additions that can't be done, whatever. But getting data, getting firm data that we go over, even at this late time, I think is the necessary homework to pay attention to costs. And it looks like only a thirty-day issue. I, I didn't think it's a six-month problem, so better wait thirty days. I don't think that's going to kill anybody or anything. So let's, let's get the data and do our homework. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Or any other commentary from the council?
Yes.
Oh, yes, sir.
Good evening. Philip Cody, 109 West Foreman Street, Narragansett. Just like to address a, or discuss a few attributes of a civilized society that seem to make things work best for everyone. First is democracy. In November of 2016, two-thirds of the voters of the town of Narragansett clearly expressed their desire when they voted for a $5.8 million dollar bond for a new library in the Belmont Building. The bond council apparently has been quite clear that the bond is to be used for the Belmont Building period. This project has, has been stalled by three of you. Two of whom attended a ribbon cutting as, as ceremony for the new Belmont Building as a library. One of you went there appropriately stated as a elected official. The other of you was not an elected official, but had stayed in front of several voting opportunity, voting get-togethers to meet the council members, that you were in support of the library. You were paneling for votes.
Keep your comments to me, please.
Okay. The, it shouldn't be a surprise to the town council, or to you, Mr. Mannix, that your constituency is legitimately upset by your failure to follow through on our wishes. We are not an angry mob. We aren't, but we are law-abiding citizens, most of us library patrons, most of us with Medicare cards. Got mine last week. The other issue I'd like to speak about is leadership. In my capacity as a local officer, for years, I commanded hundreds of young men and women. In my capacity as a orthopedic surgeon who ran a small business, I had fifty employees. What became quite clear along the way is that there was a huge difference between a leader and a boss. A boss usurps authority by jumping into the middle seat at town council meetings. Respect has to be earned.
Okay, I'm up. Again. Uh, where do we begin? Matt, I still have the same question I had two weeks ago. Why did you vote for the $5.8 million bond if this was the final plan? Is this Olus' plan? Well, I'm asking you a question. I think you owe these people the next one.
I said, I don't know how many times that I've discussed this issue publicly, privately, where I've said if it wasn't a good deal, that I was in support of renovation of the existing set. I said, I said that I went in the spring of 2017 to the library to express my concerns about the intransigence of Gilbain during negotiations. It was hard to reveal some of that because we were in executive session. As you know, we're supposed to keep what's an executive session an executive session. So the mystery as to, as to why, at that, that year, I continued to express my concerns about the project, October seventeen. We all voted on it, right? You voted against it, you had concerns about it at the time. And then you fast forward, I expressed throughout the campaign my concerns about the deals, stated them. So I was open to the Belmont purchase, the Belmont process, but I did not want to do it at any cost. And I, and I've expressed the concerns about the camp fees, I've expressed the concerns about the original appraisals, I've expressed the concerns about the parking. I can, if anyone one-on-one wants to have that conversation with me, I'm open to it, but that, I, you know I've said that many times, so, no, it was not my, it was not.
But you also, you also said that if we owned Gilbain, then you would be on board with it, but you weren't expecting Gilbain to give us something.
Do you remember the original version of this, which was a tenancy arrangement?
Yeah.
I, I don't know if you did, because it was before, it was before you were first elected.
Yes, you, you said at some point, this, you were on board.
I didn't say I was on board. But why did you make your statement, Patrick? I, I don't know if this is.
Well, I think you're supposed to be an expert in this.
I, I think I did it. I think it's, it's kind of, is that a mystery?
Well, I think you use the bond and this represents, and had your own rhetoric and your own opinion for the last few years, and you've been taking the whole town for a ride, basically. So, now, we've got $400,000 for the community center. Let's say we got around $400,000 to refit this library and put lipstick on the building. How are we paying for this? Is this going to be a bond, Matt? Who's going to pay this?
It's a total form of.
We're going to.
So what about the people who are talking about the library? I just wanted to say something. I don't know if I, I don't want to go from my outside, I don't know if I was late or not.
After Patrick speaks. Okay, Patrick, why don't you go ahead? I think we'll determine if I think, but.
Well, I think, I think we need to know. I've been taking a plan for like two and a half years. I mean, I think we can, even though some kind of, you know, we have the money and we're going to bond it, and we're going to just take it out of our reserve, which we don't have, I think if we own a $2.8 million building.
Does everyone understand that the bond money we actually have to pay interest on?
Yeah.
Do people understand? You pretend, you keep saying, no, I don't think, I don't, you don't present it that way. What, what happens is, you, you act like we hear this voice of, you're losing the bond money. The bond money, the bond money, there, you have to borrow and pay interest on it. You don't, you generally don't want to borrow. You don't want to borrow rigorous amounts of money. So if we're going to borrow in this case, I would want it to be minimal. That's what the taxpayers expect from us. There's not, is the bond is going to run out. There's no, there's nothing, we don't go in the room and the bond money is sitting there, and that's how it's presented. And the second thing is, the authorization to borrow, the money to authorize to borrow, that, that in 2016, that's an authorization to borrow, it's not a mandate to spend.
I'd just like to comment. Do you want to comment on that? When a bond, based on the Bond Act and the way that that works, when a bond is on a ballot to be voted on, it's very specifically worded, we authorize the town council to issue this bond. It doesn't, you can't use the word mandate, it has to be authorized. That's the way, it is always worded, that historically is how it's done. So when you say that, you're correct, it doesn't say mandate, because you don't, it just, it's not how it's done. So that could never be the case.
Jesse, it's technically, it's technically an authorization to borrow because other factors come into play in town decisions. We've had this discussion with the school athletic field, for example, where we, there was a lot of discussion, if certain grant had even come in, would we reduce that amount from $1.80? Those discussions take place, you are not mandated to borrow that amount. Again, that's another piece of shading of the truth that's been going on by advocates for the Belmont deal, that we have to follow the mandate to borrow a full $5.8 million. And I just want to say, we don't.
That's not true.
So we got $400,000 of the, and a $400,000, let's just, we use the one, $400,000 of the library refit. So that's $800,000.
That $400,000, it's already in the budget, so it's.
Okay, so we, so we need an additional $400,000.
No, it's already in the budget. It was already in the budget.
So it's a library?
No, no, it's for the community center.
Okay.
But remember too, that you can, not from this bond, but remember the bond council did give us a note, I saw some on social media, but it seemed to exclude one paragraph. Mike, can you put that, that bond information out?
Sure.
That the bond attorney has let us know that we can't, without going out for referendum, borrow up to $700,000 tax exempt? So maybe that's the bond that, that Matt was referring to, different from, from the bond of $5.80, but something that the bond council said is something that can't do.
Right, but right now, we have, I wish Laura King was here. But right now, we, you know, we're at 10% reserve, we're going to borrow another $400, and then we've got $400 in the budget for, you know, is that busy in the budget, that $400?
Yes.
It's about $35. Anyway. So, basically, we're going to float a bond for the library, to refit the library. Is that what you want to do?
Patrick, why don't you make your statement? That's why I'm not, I'm not, I don't have, we can, we can spend the money, or we can borrow it, those would be the options.
All right, since we don't have these answers, why don't we continue this and have a workshop? All right, would you be on board with the workshop?
Patrick, make your statement, okay? If you're not playing the gutting game here, okay?
It isn't a gutting game.
It is, it's, it's the Matt Mannix Show, putting my picture up on a dollar bill a month ago. You play, I mean, this, this is, it's personal attack after personal attack. Why don't you just make your statement? Just make your statement.
You're up there with Ben Franklin, for God's sake.
Just make your statement. And then you're laughing, and the laughter.
Well, I tell you, you need to search for humor to be up here, let me tell you.
I haven't.
Matt will save the same taxpayer money. Right, we, we had an opportunity to take that bond, reduce that bond a bit, you know, kind of negotiate, so we can refit that Belmont building, but you didn't want to hear it. But these people aren't going away. They're like a dog with a bone, whether you call them a mob or, or just, yeah, PO constituents, whatever you want to call them. They're not going away. They want this library, and, and come 2020, whatever happens during the election. I think in the long run, you're going to cost us more money than that $2.8 million. I think, I think upwards of over a million dollars. You're going to spend additionally to what you think you're going to save, but what you're doing now. So, again, in your ZD, the same taxpayer money, at the end, you're going to end up costing the town more money down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, sir.
I was watching on TV, so I just had a walkover button. I'll take your name. I'm Robinson Street, and I know every, most of you guys. And I just want to know, is anyone considered a peer school as an option? Because it's half-empty, it has handicap access, has children's bathrooms, has an auditorium, has plenty of land, and it'd be a perfect location for a library. It's got plenty of space, plenty of parking, and it's half-empty. Move the kids over there. We wouldn't have to do anything, except move some books. All the computers are set up, sprinkle systems, it's got everything. And here we are, we're fighting about, this is getting ridiculous, what's going on and on and on and on. I mean, we own the building, we own the land, we own everything. We have a tenant, the package is low. We got a building in Narragansett, which is, which is a tremendous piece of property. I mean, if Gilbain's got the laws, he doesn't buy it back. I mean, this summer, we take everything out of the library, move it up into the peer school, relocate the kids over to South Carol. I mean, what could be better? Thank you.
Susan Amoruso, West Bay Drive, 111 West Bay Drive. And I can't believe I'm up here again. I'm already, I'm going to come up at the end, but on this issue, okay, I kind of find it insulting that you think that people who went and voted on a bond issue didn't realize that when you borrow money, you pay interest. I can't think of anyone who bought it. I mean, it's so basic. I can't believe that you're saying these things, and I am directing it to you, because you're talking over people. I can't believe what is going on. It is mind-boggling, and for a library, a library that we all want, that everyone who showed up and voted that day. You know, the people who didn't, and there are people who voted no, I don't diminish them, but they were in the minority. And we run our government on the majority rules. And people are just aghast that this is happening. So the people who went and voted said, okay, I want to spend the money, I know my taxes might go up, but I want a library. They didn't vote for fixing up the little tiny thing that is library. You know, it's just, it, this shouldn't be happening. And I find it insulting that I have emailed all five of the council members, and I have failed to receive, and acknowledging that you've received my emails from three people. So Patrick and Jesse, I appreciate, nothing lengthy, but at least say, yes, I've got your email, I agree with it, I don't agree with it. But I write to my congressman, I write to my senators. When I lived in Jamestown, I've always got the courtesy of reply, and that I just can't understand why the three of you can't even say, thank you for your input, just because it is a democracy and you are supposed to hear from interested citizens. We should all be interested. So I don't know why you don't answer, but I think that's just, it's, it's basically rude, so I'm sorry to say it, but I'm disappointed. And I think if I take the time to tell you how I feel in an email, because maybe I can't come here, you deserve, because you are an elected official, to say, I agree, I disagree, or just, I got your message. It's, it's just polite, so. But I did know when I voted for that bond issue that it was going to have interest involved, because it's kind of a little long, so I'm just going.
My name's Paul Sullivan, resident chairman of Narragansett Town. The library is a library. I have one question, did you find a list, did you find an agent to list it yet, or is it going up for sale, the Belmont Building?
We're doing all that in executive session, so we're meeting an executive session right now.
I really would like to just revisit that Vickery's thing for one second, if you don't mind. Because I heard the name Breakwater Village.
Right now, yeah, we, we have to do it in public comment, because this is only comments on the.
Well, I have a comment. And Breakwater Village, you're only allowed to build on 5,000 square feet, eighteen feet high. And all of a sudden, I think I got from listening to that, that you're going to.
It's not a comment we have to come during the hearing or when we vote on the ordinance, it's out of order regarding the library issue.
Right. This is only for the library right now?
Right now.
I thought it was open forum.
No.
Keep that in mind, eighteen down there, thirty-five here, on the same 5,000 square foot block.
I got one more. In 2017, 18, you were right, you kept stating that this was a disaster, going down to Gilbain was a disaster. Gilbane was a disaster, going down the wrong road. And you know what? Finally, we finally agree on something. Under your administration, this whole library question has turned into a disaster.
Eric, is there anyone else, any other comments?
Naomi McDonald, 30 Kingsdome Road, I just want to ask a question. When was this received? What was the date that this was?
21st.
Okay, right, that's all.
All right, thank you. All right, if there's no other comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Nope.
Upstayed.
Motion approved, three to one. Our next item is item number 14, a motion to direct the town manager to hire a mediation service to work with the town council and library board of trustees in an effort to settle disagreement over the library project.
Would you like to move that motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
This item comes from Jesse and Patrick.
Yeah, so I think it's very apparent that this would be helpful in this situation at this point. We have unfortunately gotten to the point where I think this is needed. After the election, Matt, you publicly said this was gonna be a difficult but not impossible project, which was, you know, I actually felt good about that, I felt like we could work on something, do a little back and forth, and move forward with it. That, it has proven to be impossible, actually. You also said that you were looking for compromise multiple times through the, through the process, that just didn't seem, doesn't seem like that was true. When we look back historically over the last few months, we have, Patrick and I and the library board in cases, have offered to, and agreed to take the liquor store out of the equation, which I think we all agreed that that was prudent, that made sense of generating income, or we could sell it. You could lease it or sell it, but that was, you know, an initial olive branch, and we agreed with it, so I think that was great. During meetings, Patrick threw out the idea of covering the can fees with fundraising, I don't think the board of trustees was happy with that, but it was offered and it was not, you know, there was no discussion to be had, we weren't open to discussing it. Also, lowering the amount of bond. On tape, we can see that. Patrick offered to lower it to like, I think, four million at one point, and he said, either didn't respond, or you said the ship has sailed. I can't remember exactly the comment there, but we're not open to that. Last meeting, we offered, we wanted to do a special election. Let's get complete clarity on what the people want. Even though we had the 67.9%, let's make it more clear, let's respect this, you know, silent segment of the population, and let them vote again and be very clear on it. We're not open to that. So we have offered compromise in multiple cases throughout this process, in good faith. And, you know, there's no movement from this side. So portion, I hate to even say this side, because it shouldn't be the split. I mean, the last vote, two, two members of the council didn't even talk about it, they voted, did not even discuss the motion, because we know, we know that you're, that you guys, that you three are not open to working in any way to do this, to do what's best for the people in town. So, we get to the point now where we would like to offer and discuss mediation with this council, with the library board of trustees, to talk about this issue. I talked to Mark Davis, he said, you know, we might be looking at maybe $1,500 a session, like, oh, we'll do to that exactly. That was just here, and he talked with Mark, but you know.
No, definitely not.
But he said, does that sound about right, $1,500 a session?
Yeah, I think I said, certainly would be me, on my firm, but typically, in a mediation setting, typical, would be $1,500 per side, so it could be as much as $3,000.
Okay.
Like, I'd say.
So, I'm not sure how many sessions it would take, if we cap it, we could do two or three sessions. We could definitely keep this under $10,000. Maybe at $6,000. But, I mean, there's really no other option, so if you would like to work on this, open your mind to the possibilities, that's something that, you know, we'd like to talk about now and see what you think.
Thank you. Anyone for the council?
My guys ain't got no comment, come on, somebody say something for guys here. Somebody say something. Defend what you guys are doing, say something.
Patrick, quite simply, on January 22nd, we voted to sell the building, the IGA building. We, there's no, the only reason this is here is that you don't like the vote, period. I'm sorry you don't like the vote, it was a 3-2 vote, it's not, it's not fun to be a losing side of votes, I've been there, but we voted. There's no need for this. What this is asking us to do is, is to go back and look at an issue that we've already voted on, you just don't like the vote. Are we gonna start going back to all the other items that you don't like? We voted, there's no reason to have this.
The question I had, the previous, one of the previous speakers said, Joe, that you found out more facts that made this deal even worse, than what you, that was proposed, you know, before the election, or you found out more information. Can you clarify?
Patrick, I did. At, we had the workshop of the library board, I went through and I spoke about the information we found out, we met with all of this, and we met with the bond council. This isn't a question and answer, period, with the audience members. We have a motion in front of us, and I'd just either talk about it or vote on it.
I don't remember what, I'm just curious, what information that you found out that gets into a worse, a worse deal?
So Patrick, the question you're asking has nothing to do with the motion in front of us, I'd like to ask, stay with the gentleman, stay with the motion.
Ooh. All right. Well, Tori.
When?
Yeah, let's, let's hear it.
I just want to try to clarify something. We, we know there's initiatives.
Oh, when, state your name and then address?
When they, when they, whatever, in their hands over the last 65 years. And I'm sorry my wife can't come up and speak to me, but, you know, there's voter initiatives. There's voter initiatives that aren't gonna go away, they're in the works. You can't stop it, nobody can stop it. If we have to take it all the way to November 2020, it's gonna go all the way to November 2020. A sensible way right now to try to settle this is either buy a special election or go to arbitration. That's the only way. I'm not going away, so I will write those initiatives all the way to November 2020 if I have to. Okay? So let's save the town some money, let's move this forward, and either have the election, have the mediation, et cetera. Thank you.
Yeah, obviously, I'm going to speak for what I've been talking about the last couple of months. We have reached an impasse, and if it were an obvious, it is definitely obvious tonight. And this happens to people of goodwill, and we've got to all consider ourselves, people of goodwill. I think this is something that we have to assume. The mediator must know the past, and will find out about it, but is not hampered by the past, like all of us are. We've all felt negative about various things here. Now, the mediator starts with no baggage of the past. Any two groups needed that, this town council and the library, getting rid of all the baggage of the past would be a magnificent thing to get. Now, this is not an obfuscator who might choose a path that one side might find unlivable, or both sides might find unlivable. This is an attempt to get people of goodwill together, perhaps at the beginning, you'll talk to one group, and then the other, and then transfer information back and forth. But this is a mediation. I would end with two songs from The Beatles. This comes because I was born two days before John Lennon. That great song, "We Can Work It Out," and the most important song ever written, "You Don't Always Get What You Want."
I know you moved out having an election, and this is probably one of our last chances to get in, it will be an obvious, but before voting on this motion tonight, I would like to ask, I'd like Mr. Mannix, Ms. Law, and Miss Lima to answer some questions. I think the mediator and other members of this audience would like answers too. First of all, Mr. Mannix, at the last town council meeting, Mr. Pugh asked you directly, have you or anyone you know spoken to any person or business at any time about purchasing the Belmont building? You replied that you had not, but you never answered the second part of the question as to whether or not anyone you knew had, even after Mr. Pugh pressed you for an answer. You definitely dodged answering that question. Have you ever heard the expression, lie of omission? A lie of omission is a lie in which someone deliberately withholds pertinent details about something in order to skew someone else's idea of the truth, or engender a misconception. I'd like the answer to the second part of Mr. Pugh's question from you tonight. Secondly, I'd like to ask Ms. Lawler why she purposely, or for lack of doing her homework, put forth misinformation at the last town council meeting. If you were here or watched the exchange between Mr. Pugh and Ms. Lawler, you heard Ms. Lawler state that the bond says to renovate or to purchase. That is untrue. The bond states that the money's up for the acquisition and renovation of real estate. Even Mr. Mannix tried to correct her on that issue, if you watched the tape. She hinted that the bond money could be used for the renovations on the existing library. Mr. Pugh tried to explain to her that that was impossible, but she just brushed his comments aside. Ms. Lawler, you need to do your homework before you put false information out to the And I think you owe Mr. Pugh and the audience an apology. Mr. Lima, every time you open mouth, you talk all around a subject without having anything substantive to say. I guess that is the true definition of a politician. You say you offer the best library the town of Narragansett can afford. The library board has shown you proof that the Belmont building is the most cost-effective plan. You haven't offered any other plan or figures to refute what the board has presented. The people of Narragansett were fully aware of the cost of the 5.8 million dollar bond and were willing to spend it on the library. How many times do you have to be told that the town is only on the hook for 5.8 million? $33 for a $400,000 valued home, as Mr. Murray has shown us over and over again, is the worst-case scenario. That cost would be even less if you factor in reimbursement from Ola's private donations and offset, I haven't had three minutes yet.
Yes, it's 3:20. Thank you.
Mr. Lima, would you please put the Belmont board attorney again? I want to be able to show the town where it clearly states that bond money can be used, different bond money, be it, but bond money can be used, $700,000 to renovate. I want everyone to see that paragraph, this is a very important paragraph. Thank you, right at the top.
But not the bond money we voted for?
Let's keep it simple.
So, correspondence from the bond council, however, I should note that there is, in any interest in renovating the current library site, you could issue a tax-exempt bond without referendum in the amount of approximately $700,000 in any fiscal year for renovations of the existing library, provision to charm. So that's...
But can we issue in this year, when we're sitting on 10% reserve and sitting on a $2.8 million building without a plan? That's a question for Laura, can you, because she was here?
It is two different things, Patrick.
No, it isn't two different things.
Hang on one second.
We do have a plan.
We do have a plan, however...
We have a reserve.
However, this information was put out, when this letter was put out on social media to, to your group, this paragraph was not included. So I want to make sure everybody knows that there was a way to defer on, but there was a way to renovate, but the building wasn't, because it's like...
Laura, I have not seen it.
This is, this is in a letter, Patrick. Mike, can you go to the front part of the letter where it sent you to count town council, the date that, there it is? So Mark Davis sent this out to us, he forwarded from David Farrar. As a matter of fact, I do remember the beginning of this paragraph from, from Mark, Mark, correct me if I'm incorrect, it was, you were asked by, I believe, by one or two members of the council?
That's right, a couple of town council members asked me, of course, it's a bond matter, and I asked bond council and forwarded the information.
I'd like to just add a little info, background to, in detail to how that works. At any, in any budget year, town council can issue 1.5% of its annual budget as a bond. They can do that on their own without getting voter approval. That's always, that has existed, it's not new, it's just something that, I guess, is being brought up now. That would be, there would be interest on that as well. I guess if, if the first vote for a bond, that's not good enough, but if these three want to issue their own bond, then it's, it's okay.
Eric, is any, any other commentary?
I'm actually reading this from Dr. Albert, who I'm reading.
Just give your name and address, and then who you're reading on behalf of, please.
Naomi McDonald, 30 Kingsdome Road, and I'm reading it on behalf of Dr. Albert.
Oh, because he left?
Yes, he had to leave. There are many people who feel disenfranchised as a result of the recently purchased building being put up for sale and the failure for a re-vote for or against the new library building. The library board spent nearly 10 years of time, energy, and work to find a location and a plan for the new library. I hope all the council members recognize that it is human nature for any of us to feel hurt if you invested so much time on a task and it was all taken away from you. I question why three town council elected officials who were appointed to uphold the will of the people failed to act accordingly to the will of the people. In addition, after hearing testimony for over two hours from the residents of Narragansett, and from hearing testimony from those involved in planning the libraries, I ask what made three town council members circumvent the plan of the library board, who were entrusted based upon their expertise to determine a location and development for the new library? We all have our unique levels of expertise, therefore, it would be foolhardy for any of us to say we know more in the area of cooperation of the library than those who have been trained in library science and who have worked in the library for many years. There is a well-known quote echoed by former political leaders and still holds true, and that is, united we stand, divided we fall. And our great leader, Abraham Lincoln, unstated, a house divided cannot stand. I feel if we do not work together to come together, a mutually convenient solution, we all lose and it can cost us money, litigation fees, and delays. I therefore urge all concerned parties, including the library board, to sit down with the help of an experienced mediator and come up with a game plan that will make our town council team, the winning team. I hope the town council and the library board can come up with a strategy so that we can plant a state-of-the-art library that will meet the needs of all its residents. Mediation is often used in business and in contract negotiations. To conclude, I strongly recommend that the town council work together with the newly-appointed town manager, the library board, and with a professional, nonpartial mediator, so we can proactively move forward to building a state-of-the-art library. I would like to commend Councilmen Murray and Hope for offering multiple solutions to resolve the differences on the support issue. to resolve the differences on the support issue. I felt the idea for a re-vote was very good, and I feel working with a mediator can be effective to bring all parties together. If the three town council members strongly feel their beliefs are justified, let an independent, nonpartial mediator determine the validity of everyone's position. Let it not be known that we have leaders in the Narragansett Town Council that are unwilling to hear the voices of their constituents, nor willing to discuss their differences in good faith. Thank you, Dr. Albert Elwa.
Thank you.
Nancy Gudishell, 8 North Hill Drive. You know, I've come to all the town council meetings regarding this library issue of late. And at every turn, I've been disappointed. And I just want you all to know, and I want everybody up there watching, that I have always functioned with a mantra that, something like this. When you tell me it can't be done, I'm not deterred. And I just want, however this vote goes, and I don't expect it to go the way that I would like to see it go, this is an offer. It's not over.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just one quick comment on this. I do want to just make sure it's totally clear that this would be very specifically mediation and not arbitration, because Richard brought that point up, and he's right. With arbitration, you would have a ruling at the end that is a binding ruling. And I wouldn't want to get into that situation. It wouldn't be fair to either side here. So it would be mediation, which is much closer to, like, counseling. We could all lie down on couches and move together. So, and we, you know, talk through it, and hopefully come to an understanding. But it's not a binding arbitrator, where there's a ruling. So that's not it. It's mediation.
So, Rich, Bill, what do you think? This is an out, this is last call for democracy? This is a way to...
Patrick, I've already answered that. We voted on 20 seconds.
All right, Rick, Richard, what do you think? Last call for democracy?
Patrick, I have no problem sitting down with anybody. So I don't need anybody to tell me how I'm going to run a meeting, run my business, or run what will be discussed at the table. Okay? I can sit down with anybody. I'm pretty reasonable, guys.
So you have a board with three?
Yeah.
I hope everybody had all heard the mocking laughter from the crowd, from the angry mom. From the angry mom. Because what I want to talk about, actually, what I want to talk about is something that happened when I first came on the council. Okay? When I first came on the council, we were confronted. I sat in those chairs from February of 2012 till November of 2012. Never spoke once at a meeting. Listened, tried to absorb what was going on. Ran, it was a primary, the general election. Wanted to educate myself on the issue, on the issues. There were some controversial issues. I could have stepped up and jumped on certain popular waves. At the time, there was a fire with the town manager. His name was Grady Miller. There was a lot of anger about that and popular support against his firing. And I remember distinctly it was Memorial Day time period, 2012. Fast forward, we had to select the new town manager. So we inherited that problem, that void, as a council. And one thing I'll say I'm proud of since then is that we've been very successful in getting town managers. We haven't played the traditional parlor game in Narragansett of fighting over the town manager. So that, with Pam Nolan and Jim Manning, we did have two wonderful town managers sent there. But that time in 2013, I was brand new to the council, and we had, we were down to two, we were down to two candidates. And Dean Hoxsey was one of them, and I was a strong supporter of Dean Hoxsey based on the interviews and based on his qualifications. And I thought he was far and above the better candidate. The other candidate didn't stay in the conversation, so there was a discussion about appointing an interim town manager. And I was very much against that. And me and another council member were the dissenting votes on that. And the three people on the council wanted to push through and put in through an interim town manager. There was a lot of popular support for Dean Hoxsey to be the town manager. A lot of people felt Grady Miller had a royal deal, but that doesn't mean you should give Dean Hoxsey one. I was very passionate about my position. I feel that I was right, and I think we would have, we still would have Dean Hoxsey as our town manager at this time. What I didn't do after February of 2013 is continue to bring motions on the same topic and to reconsider the idea and to find another way to do the town manager discussion. I moved on. I was outvoted. It was probably the only time I lost sleep because I was very, it was a council member on an issue. It was a very controversial one. But that is not what we've seen on this issue. We've not seen people willing to have that move forward. I didn't. I have the track record on it. I have the track record on that and moving forward from a difficult vote and working with a council at the time that was a majority of endorsed Democrats. I was the only independent on the council at the time. But I worked together on many other issues with them. So I have that track record. So I just want to say that. And that's why I point out what I've seen is poison on this issue. You need to at some point say, we're moving forward on the issue. I didn't, and I had a lot more passion for that than I heard in the town, than I've heard on the town right now on this issue. So...
And there's a big difference between the 3-2 vote for a town manager and over 5,000 people voting for a bond. I think we can get Dean Hoxsey to be the mediator.
He's a little busy, right?
Well, he's a local. I think he'd be on board with that.
All right. There's no more discussion.
Dean Hoxsey?
All in favor? All in favor? All in favor?
One more up next.
Go ahead.
Barbara Bush, Roll Score. I'm sort of happy you brought up 2012. I didn't live here then. But I find, I don't think it's an issue between two council members and three council members. I do think it's an issue with council and constituents. And I think it's interesting that someone running in 2012 wrote to the South County Independent, "If elected, I will always remember that the primary job of the elected representative is to represent one's constituents." That was you, Mr. Mannix. And I don't feel you're representing me or many other people.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No, motion fails 2 to 3. Item 26 is a motion to amend the rules and procedures for meetings and move open forum to directly have consent agenda.
I'll move that motion.
Second?
Discussion. So, this, the problem with this motion is a little bit like a motion to reconsider.
It's not quite... So, to reconsider, we have to go back to its original place on the agenda. And this is actually a different placement for open forum, so it's a new motion.
Because your, the motion from January 22nd was a motion to discuss and possibly amend rules and procedures for the Narragansett town council meetings as adopted August 6, 2018.
Yep.
And then we voted a motion by council board, seconded by council leader to amend the motion to keep the changes as agreed upon at the last meeting with open forum scheduled at the end of the meeting.
Correct.
And that was voted on.
Yeah. I mean, we can amend it. We can amend town council rules at any point. So doing that is not a reconsideration. It's always open to be amended, and that's what we're doing here. Because there's various rules in town council rules. So that's what we're, you know, we could always amend on that time.
That's fine. I mean, that, I would argue it's a motion to reconsider. But if you want to go ahead, that's fine.
Okay. Sounds good. So, January 7th, President Mannix stated that he was, he intended to move open forum to the end of the meeting. The reasoning was to get through the last four meetings of the town manager. And I quote, or, you know, to quote you, he said, "That is the reason for this". So now that Jim Manning is gone, Sean Corrigan's in as the interim, it would make sense, you know, based on your statement, to bring open forum back towards the beginning of the meeting. So my argument is would be right after consent agenda. And unless there's some reason why you change your mind since that original statement. So if you want to speak on that, you know, fine.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
So I'll speak on this. So originally, I looked into this open forum and putting it towards the end because I felt it was important for our town workers who sit here for 12, 14 hours a day that we could get them home maybe in a reasonable hour and do our business first, and then go to that open forum because it just continues on. So I looked at other councils that do this, and there's quite a few. There's other communities that have the open forum at the end. I think it's a little bit of consideration towards our town workers. They're here all day, and then we just carry on, carry on. Look at what time it is. Okay? So for me, I'm fine with the open forum being at the end. We can get through business within an hour, hour and 15 minutes, be 30, quarter of a night, and then have open forum. So I'm for the open forum at the end.
But doesn't it take the same amount of time whether it's at the beginning or the end?
I'd rather have the open forum at the end. No, because people can, people can come up and speak and come up and speak. And you may have 30 people that can come up and speak. And if they each have 3 minutes, that's quite a bit of time. So...
But...
I just want an open forum at the end. That's, that's what I'm thinking.
So you just want it at the end? Okay.
Anyone else? Anything for the public? Yes.
Carleen Town, Woody Road Road. First of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Elwa for creating the forum page on Facebook. It has given so many of us the opportunity to discuss issues in Narragansett 24/7. Unlike here, where we have to wait until 10:00 p.m., twice a month, to be awarded a 3-minute window to comment during open forum. I think we all know that the move to the end of the meeting was not, as suggested by the president, to get through town business before Mr. Manning left his position, but to eliminate an entire population of library supporters unable to be here after 10:00 p.m. Let's face it, folks. The town manager, town solicitor, town clerk, counselors, and other town officials have to stay until all the business of the evening is conducted. So why would it matter if open forum were at the beginning or the end of the meeting except as a ploy to discourage a certain segment from being heard? Last month, a young girl, I think she said she was either fourth or fifth grade, came here to give an impassioned plea to get you to support the library project. No, she's not a taxpayer or a registered voter here, but she is the future of our town and has a right to express her opinion in front of the council. You cannot expect children to wait until 10:00 p.m. to be heard on a school radio. At the opposite end of the spectrum, you have old people like me who are uncomfortable driving at night. Unlike the story of Cinderella when the magical spell didn't end until midnight, some of us turned back into pumpkins at 9:00 p.m. Please move open forum back to the beginning of the meeting.
I'm Deb Kopeck, 363 Point Year Road. I actually was going to bring this up in open forum, but gosh, a little lucky, I guess. At the last meeting, I did speak about moving open forum back to its original position on the town council agenda. Since then, I too have done some research and discovered that actually most town council agendas place open forum about midway through the evening, some earlier, only two later. Besides Narragansett, they are caught between North Kingstown and have their forums at the end. And not surprisingly, upon reading minutes from those two towns, there are far fewer comments than in any other towns like Westerly, East Greenwich, and Exeter among them. And speaking of East Greenwich, they have their open forum at the end of their meeting until recently, when their entire organization was displaced through election. And theirs is now the third item on their agenda. So once again, I'd urge you to reconsider this, in my opinion, hasty change with respect to the democratic process and change it to an earlier part of the session. Thank you.
Sarah Schelle, 62 Long Street, Narragansett. I too have asked in an email on behalf of the seniors, I'm the vice president of the senior activity group over in Narragansett. And a lot of the seniors have said they would come to the meeting, but they can't stay that late. And I among them have trouble staying awake because I'm a very early riser, and I don't like driving at night. And it gets colder and icy there. And I really think it's a suppression of democracy. I think that's the real reason we moved it to the end. Because, look at the audience now. So many people have left because they don't want to stay at the end of the meeting. And I think it's important to have the discourse in the democracy and to listen to the public and not add them as an afterthought. I think it's really disgraceful that you've moved it to the end. And I think it's a power move so you don't have to hear it from a lot of people that would normally come. And also, young families would, might like to come and participate in their government, but they can't keep their children up that late. And you refuse to even entertain me. You vote, it's a block, no matter what. And it's like, it's really disgraceful. This is what's happened to our democracy. I feel like I'm living in a monarchy I feel like I'm living in a monarchy form of government more than a democracy. And on that note, how do you treat the board of trustees? People that are dedicated to the library. I know Mr. Mannix, you at one time said to me, "It's a special interest group." Yeah, we're specially interested in the library, and our job is to be the guardians of the library. And it's like, you don't trust citizens of the town, you don't trust the committees. The only ones you trust are yourselves and your constituents.
Thank you. Yes?
Susan Amber Russo, 111 West Bay Drive, Narragansett. I missed two town meetings, and I wanted to speak about this open forum thing. I tried staying at, I was actually in attendance at a meeting a month ago, but the person I gave a ride to had to leave because they're back, so I couldn't stay. So eliminated me from that one. Last town council meeting was during school vacation, and I had my grandkids with me, so I could have easily brought them to the town council meeting so they could have heard me speak as an interested voter, and they would have learned a valuable lesson. But because it's at the end, 10:00, it's too late, the kids in fourth grade, as far as I'm concerned, maybe some people will go instead. They missed out on an opportunity, plus I missed out on attending and being able to speak. I mean, I could have come, but I wanted to address this issue. So now we're here again, and I'm here, and I just think that, I don't think, first of all, that town workers, not to devalue them, have any more rights than anyone else because a lot of people, I'm retired, so I don't have the issue about that, but I'm older. But what holds a worker for that person ahead of a mother who's got kids, they're trying to get into bed, and they have to hire a babysitter, and they want to do it at a timely hour? Or what about other people who work and who want to attend this? So I think you just, in the interest of getting as many ideas, and when you look at the agenda and you read something, you think, "Oh, I'd like to talk about that," you know, or something that comes up. I don't think having the open agenda would, I don't know, reduce it that much. I just feel strongly that you want to hear from as many people as you can, and I think it should be at the beginning, not at this late time.
I'm very happy that we have it at the end. And one reason is I, I, it's hard for me to speak in front of people. If you have a pile of people back here, I don't like, I get hurt. So I'd rather have fewer people here when I speak. I really do rather have fewer people. So that's number one. That's number one. Number two is if people are too old, too tired, whatever, they can send an email, they can write a letter, they can do it, you know, you don't have to speak up here. You can, there's other means of communication that can be done. Actually, it's your job to conduct your business first. Do your business first, and then you can listen to the million of ideas that we have out here and go on to 11:00. It's okay, you know? But I think it's very good where it is at the end. I'm really happy with it. And when people feel very concerned about initial things, they'll stay. And that way, you'll get somebody who's really concerned and informed, and you get a better, actually, you get a better presentation if you wait because they're right on his thing. So I think we ought to leave it here at the end, and it's just fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Good evening, Council President. So a couple of weeks ago, I was leading a town hall, and I ran into a woman that I hadn't seen in town hall for quite a while, Carol Stewart. You all know her. And I said, "Hi, Carol," and she said, "Oh, it's so late. I hate coming out here at this time of night and it's so cold." She came in here, and the first thing she said to you in open forum, which began after 9:30, was, "I had to leave my home on a cold winter night and come down here after quarter past nine. So if you don't do this for any of us, or if you don't like the people that want a new library, that's appalling, but why don't you think about that one woman, Carol Stewart, and do it for us?" Now, the right of petition is expressed, as set out in the First Amendment, and you know that approaching you in open forum is the purest form of democracy that some of us have. And our town manager, Jim Mannix, spoke eloquently about that and applauded all of us for teaching him so much about that purest form of democracy. So I'll leave you with these words from the Declaration of Independence. On July 4th, 1776, the country's founders adopted a famous statement of principles and listed grievances, declaring that, "In every state of these oppressions, we have petitioned for redress in the most humble terms. Our repeated petitions have been answered only by repeated injury. A prince, whose character is thus marked by every act which may define a tyrant, is unfit to be the ruler of a free people. We fought for a democratic republic, and we don't want to live under tyranny."
Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else?
Well, I just have another, I really got an answer on it, and you don't have to answer. But it's just confusing to me because you gave a specific reason and a timeline for moving it. It was a forum meeting thing, and that was the reason, it's right there. So that's up. So I'm curious what, you know, what your stance is now, if you're going to go to move it back, or if you have a different feeling about it.
Patrick.
I have a solution. Why don't we do both? We'll put it right after consent agenda, as the council men view as suggested, and we'll also keep it at the end of the meeting, so if anybody's left standing, they can certainly voice their opinion. But again, during open forum, before the agenda, people who come up and speak during open forum, they can't speak on the agenda items that are listed for that evening anyways. So it isn't like there's a, you know, a big barrage. It's usually the same few, they're standing. You know, Mr. Concerned for Time over here, and we're up here four years, just like at 12 hours with this guy. So I don't, I think we have enough evening to put it on, both put it right after consent agenda, and then again, at the end of, at the end of the meeting, if somebody had something else to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. Motion failed, two to three. And now we do have our open forum, council citizens, residents accessing this portion of the meeting are neither adopted nor endorsed by this body, but heard as requested, and please come forward if you have anything you want to comment on the town. Yes?
I know I mentioned, oh, what I wanted to say first is, I find it amazing how we get cut off at three minutes and never have a chance for rebuttal, but you can talk forever, and you can rebut anything you want to say. That's not in my speech. I spoke earlier about Dr. Alba's Facebook page, and I noticed that Mr. Mannix, Ms. Law, or Mr. Lemar, are members of the group, but I suspect that they have spies who report comments to them so they can have their rebuttal ready if confronted. As Ms. Law had with her ready-at-hand ballot numbers to defend her position, that the number of ballots each candidate received really didn't count. All that mattered was the five top voters who backed the job. As much as I was disappointed in the election, in the results of the election, I have to accept that the voters spoke and elected you. What I don't understand is how Ms. Law can use logic to defend the results of the election, but ignore the voters' wishes to move forward with the library project when the top vote getter in the entire election was the overwhelming approval of the library bond issue by more than 67%. And no, Mr. Mannix, I don't need a lecture on the fact that the bond was merely permission to borrow when not a mandate to spend. We understand how bonds work. People buy bonds and expect a return on their money in the form of interest. As the bill payers in this town, we understand that the principal in interest will be paid with our tax dollars. We understood that when we voted in 2016, and we understand those economics today. What we don't understand is your unwillingness to abide by the voters' wishes. The other thing, the last thing I want to say is, a psychologist would have a hate with Mr. Mannix's verbal and nonverbal reactions to comments from both sides of the fence. He smirked when Ms. Meg Rogers smirked when she finished talking. You, and I find that disgusting.
I put in, I think, three petitions 17 days ago. The town charter said it's after 14 days, it's supposed to appear on a town council agenda. They're not here. Is there a reason for that?
The opinions came in from the solicitor on Friday. I haven't grabbed mine yet. I think we put them in our mailboxes.
Well, I don't, that doesn't, that doesn't address the charter. Charter's, you could have put them on Wednesday, you needed to put them on. The charter says it's supposed to be here at this council.
We didn't have the opinions, which we would attach the agenda. It's only on March 18th.
It's Mark's fault.
It's not his fault, it's going to be on from March 18th. The, I, we did...
The charter says it's supposed to be here.
I understand what the charter says. I'm not going to get any give and take, but I agree with it. We haven't had initiatives anyone could remember in a long time.
Oh, I, I, I went through the last one, went back now.
We did, still we did.
So I've been through it before, and I know the procedure.
Thank you, when? March 18th, they'll be on.
This is the second charter violation that you've had since you've been president.
Thank you, when. Thank you so much. Thank you. Yes, Karen?
As most of you probably know, very sadly, we lost a son from this community. I'm talking about Christopher Manke, who passed away in Texas as a result of a motorcycle accident, and was a family with my family, lived very, very well for 30 years, and it had just been remarkable support to our family. And when we went to Memorial Service, I was struck by how proud it, the Memorial Service was, and how many youth returned from where they were living to honor Chris. And it really struck me that the community of Narragansett has really changed, and it's changing for the worse. I mean, every year, we lose students, and we get more and more rentals, and it's missing that community feeling. With the school department, having had five children, graduated from the high school, when I'm not concerned, when I moved here, my older daughter was a junior, and my third child was a freshman, and there were a lack of courses for the students to take. And I go into the principal and said, "Can I go to South Kingston, or North Kingston? Can I take them at URI?" But there were a lack of courses. And what's happening now is we're importing students, but we're not importing families. And it's changing the character of the town. I mean, it's like, children used to have relationships, whereas go on play with their neighborhood friends. Now it's to the point where you have to get in a car, or get in a lot of parents' work, and bring your children someplace else to play. And it's like your neighbors, if you need a ride to the train station, your neighbors now are mostly investment property owners where they have students, and with the public transportation, the whole town is really, it's almost like a ghost town in the center of town. We purposely moved to the center of town to be near the school, to be near the lawnmower, to be near the RGA market, to be near the beach. We didn't live on the north end, we didn't live on the mountain shores. And it's a great childhood for the kids, but none of my grandchildren want to return. It's true expensive for their parents to afford a house. And it's very sad. People coming to town won't have the same kind of community feeling, and that's what just really kills me. Because it's not only the beach, it's not only a tourist town, it was a home for our family. And now I know the seniors moving out of town because they don't have the support they needed in the community. They're moving to South Kingston, and moving to other places. But it's very sad that my children can't even afford to come back here because all the houses have been sold to investment people. What's very welcome to a little more than secluded areas, which are more for your homes, and maybe that's not as much of a problem yet because there are children here. But it's also a deterrent to get people to move here. And I'm talking not only industries that we don't have, but doctors, lawyers. Do you think they don't want to move to a town where the high school is just loading students? And the very kids that can come to the high school, who aren't town, are people with cars. So that gives the advantage...
That's a concern. That's a huge concern.
Well, yeah.
That's a concern. That's a huge concern.
It's a huge concern, but what are you doing about it?
David.
David, thank you. David F. D. Woodward, Narragansett. About a year ago, the town council agreed to do a study of residential parking in town and to put together some experts within the town offices to study the residential parking issue. As you know, about a year ago, I said it's very frustrating to park around town, especially during the summer months. And what's front of mind is about a month from now, you're going to see all that non-residents slash residents move back into the pier area with their Florida license plates and be able to park anywhere in town. Yet I still, as a taxpayer in this town, will not be able to park anywhere in this town. My truck is registered in Narragansett, I pay property tax in Narragansett, I am a resident in this town, and my kids do attend Narragansett schools. I am the exact family you want in this town, yet I'm told I do not park anywhere in this town. No one in this town can say that this town is more crowded than Newport during the summer. Yet Newport residents can get a parking sticker and park anywhere in town. Yet residents in this town, whether you live in Galilee, or you live in Bonin, or you live just outside the pier area, cannot do that. I please hope and implore you to look at the residential parking stickers in this area again and see if we can do something about it, so that residents can park anywhere in town, no matter where you live. It seems only right, even seems like it's part of the 14th amendment, to be honest with you. So please look at that, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Susan Amber Russo, 111 West Bay Drive, Narragansett. I just wanted to say that I'm very disappointed about the open forum. I feel that people are giving in legitimate reasons. I really feel like everything is just all in the depths of the core. Take it, blah, blah, blah. It's disturbing. And I attended these library meetings and things, and I personally want to say that I really, really find it offensive that the word "ma" is being used to describe any people in this town. Because I don't think anybody, whether you're for or against the library, for or against parking, I don't think anything in this town qualifies for "ma." So I think that descriptive adjective should be eliminated in further letters to the editor or anything in public. I guess part of the record. I mean, just because someone doesn't agree with you and has, you know, the rigor to talk about it, attend meetings, and express that you disagree with somebody, that does not make a "ma." So I really hope that this word will be eliminated from this discussion. As unpleasant as it is, it is not "ma."
Thank you.
Lori Kelly, 25 Wildfield Farm Road. So one of the problems with having the forum at the end of the night is there's no one here. So in the past, when the open forum was early in the meeting, the house was full, and some of the historical societies made announcements, and Petaschwamskaid, and the, you know, there's all sorts of educational programs going on, and those were read into the record in open forum. So that's what I'm going to do now, even though I'm just basically informing the five of you. On January 26th, from noon to 1:30, we had another one of our really successful library outreach programs, whether it's outreach to the community, not just educational and informational, but we do a stone soup, which the fire chief has been gracious enough to come, and coincidentally, Dean Hoxey did it when he was acting town manager. They read a book called Stone Soup, and it's a community event. Lots of families come, lots of elderly people come, and this year, our numbers were 200, over 209 pounds of canned goods and personal care items were donated for the, for the community, the neediest in the community. $157 in cash donations, which went to the community food market at St. Peter's Church. 79 people showed up before we started serving soup, which is also very significant because they, they knew it started at noon, but they were there beforehand to get their soup. And over 180 people attended this event. Like I said, the fire department was involved. They also have some of the firemen come over in their gear, so the children are really excited about that. The food is always donated from local restaurants, so Arturo Joe's, Bella Mont's, Coaster House, Crazy Burger, Ganza Wraps, Mariner Grill, Paranera Bread, Shaw's, Stock and Jump and Twin Willows. I might have missed someone. Twin Willows, I might have missed someone. And this year we have the very exciting Frozen Soup, which is not really frozen, but it was Rob Satalino, who's related to one of the librarians, made a soup in honor of the movie Frozen, which was also a very big hit with the kids. So again, you know, I know you tend to think that we just should have books in our library, but our mandate from the state is outreach to the community on a whole bunch of different events and Stone Soup was another successful one this year. Thank you.
Meg.
Margaret Rogers, 68, Earl's Court. I had to exit the room, but I believe council president was discussing a situation where he was in the minority in the town council and how he was able to work and collaborate with others. So I think it's an awesome opportunity for self-reflection, Matthew. If you think back to when you and I really started working together, you and I used to meet in the home of Mr. and Mrs. Bob Shields, who are library proponents, as I am. And we really worked very intimately together, didn't we? And we worked together with you and you were the only voice in the beginning in the town council who wanted to prevent deep water wind from laying the cable on the town beach. And many of the same people who are involved in library advocacy now, many of those people, I think Byron and Marie Waldman, the Shields, myself, the list could go on and on. You were in the minority in that council. The council president was council president James Kelly. He is, we have a nonpartisan council, but it's well-known that he's a fairly progressive Democrat. Councilman Doug McLaughlin, who maybe is a more moderate Democrat, they would, and council president Donano, they were very strong advocates for the Deep Water Wind Project. You and I, the Shields, the Waldmans, many other people, as I said, many of whom are library advocates, all worked very intimately together in this town hall and we prevented the beach from being torn up and deep water wind from laying the cable on our town beach. And how did that happen? Because all those people who were Democrat affiliated, listened to the will of the people, Matthew, led by you. And I never heard you call us an angry mob when we stood here and we addressed Mr. Grisbowski, Mr. Savant Towne and all the human leaders. You never used the word angry mob about me or Mr. Shields or Ms. Waldman or anyone else that was helping you and them. It's only useful to use it now. So I think it's a marvelous opportunity for self-reflection because all those Democrat affiliated in our nonpartisan town council, you led, you were the one that exhibited the leadership. And they listened to the will of the people and put aside their own personal preference to have the cable laid in the beach, which is what they wanted, because they listened to the will of the people. And that's why people are so upset. So it's a beautiful illustration of what went right and now under your leadership, how everything is going wrong.
Thank you, but they all may remember that it was a unanimous vote not to do that. It wasn't a split vote.
There was no referendum on the ballot, Matt.
It was not a split vote of the council, it was a unanimous vote. Stanley. Stanley, did you speak during public comment?
No, I don't think I did, I believe that there are none. From one of the others. I figured it was one of these. Read me a bedtime story a little later. I can't resist it. I'm going to keep it short. I'm going to get out of this. I want to just say that our library staff has the skillset which has served the community at the highest level. Yeah, beautifully. Our library staff, beautifully. Now, in order to help along, I would like to expand the facilities. I'd like to give them more room to exercise their expertise and help the town. And that's why I say, can they partner up with three other libraries in town, one at each school? We have a library at each school. We have empty classrooms in each school. Can we expand the libraries in the schools with extra classrooms and allow the main library personnel to train them or do what they have to do? So now we have plenty of facilities for the library's staff to do their job and get out to the children, which I think is, get them off the phone a little bit maybe. So we do have facilities available. It's another option, it's another option. We don't always have to build big buildings when we have buildings there and we have libraries there and we have a library in there as an asset. She could probably use some help. I would like to see, maybe the kids can do yoga in the gym. I don't, I don't know, the kids are computers. Schools could have the computers in the classrooms, so now they go to the library, they go to the computer in the classroom. Get some classrooms around there, I'm sure they can make them usable for the library. So now the kids can go and learn the computers. I know there's a professor that volunteers to help children out. Maybe these other professors will come and help children at these libraries, whether it's reading, computers, amusing, I don't know. Flexibility. So there are numerous options available, you can't pursue in extreme large building. Sometimes it's intimidating. And with the big, with the big building, we're going to have to have sections for the children. Yeah, I with the North Kingston family, again, and so are all the children here and children there, all different sections, they couldn't really intermingle, they're all separate sections. And that's what we have. We have three separate sections here for children that utilize the library. What we need is that staff who's so effective to partner up with them to help out.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, seeing none, we have a motion to retire the executive session of the town council in accordance with the right of general laws.